May thirtieth Athabasca County Council Meeting to order. First item of business is the approval of the agenda. The items that I know about that must be discussed are if you're ready. Jordan, have you got the recording going? Two point one, four point one. Five point one. Seven point four, eight point two. Twelve point one is going to be in addition, C A O briefing under section twenty four. And I'd like to also add the Greater North. Is an update, I just have to, that's ten point one V. I just have a brief verbal update for you. Other items, Counselor.
Thank you, ten point one G, please.
Ten point one G, Counselor Holland. Counselor Chamsik, Counselor Wallack.
Ten point one Y.
Ten point one Y. That's Northern Lights, Kate, Counselor Wallack.
Um, seven point three. And ten point one A A.
Ten point, seven point three and ten point one A A. Shall I, I'll go through the list again, is there any other? So I have two point one, four point one, five point one. Seven point three, seven point four, eight point two. Ten point one G, ten point one V. Ten point one Y, ten point one A A. And we are adding number twelve point one C A O briefing under section twenty four one. Counselor Cromwell, are you willing to move?
Move as amended.
Last call for touches, Counselor Cromwell has moved the approval of the agenda. As amended with the adoption of the motions. Listed for those items not selected for debate. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of the motion of the approval of the agenda, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. Our delegation is at eleven, so we've got some, we're gonna move on. The first item for discussion is five point one, that is on page twenty seven of your agenda. Who are, I added. This is on because the motion is, uh, the recommended motion includes the words, uh, as discussed. Is there someone willing to move a clear motion on this item?
I'm sorry, to move a clear emotion?
Emotion, yeah.
Sure, um, if I may.
Yep, floor is yours.
Yeah, to direct administration to revise policy eighty one hundred audio recording and live streaming of council meetings.
Counselor Holland has moved to direct administration to revise policy eighty one hundred. Audio recording, live stream of council meetings. There are a couple of items for discussion, I think, so, and I'm sorry that I'm, I feel like we haven't maybe met, I should have. Opened this for discussion to clarify a couple of things first, so that's, there is a motion. Um, the recommendations from admin are to examine how long recordings will be accessible and also. Uh, to just make some minor other amendments. Admin, C A O, do you have any recommendations on the timing that you think we should keep or what other areas keep?
Yeah, in our research, Mr. Chairman, um, a lot of places, all their meetings, uh. Um, those that post on YouTube. It varies, some only go back a couple of years, some go back as far as when they started, so. Uh, it's really, uh. At the discretion of council, it's, it's not much work for us to make, once it's on YouTube. In their, uh, library, it, there's no work for us.
Is there any cost for us?
No, there's no cost.
Counselor Cromwell, the floor is yours.
That actually answered that current question that I had.
Uh, so at the table, how, what's the, what's the general feeling, are you indifferent to the length of time, or you wanna cut it off? Counselor Capitanic and Cromwell.
I would say leave it, leave it forever. As long as you two let us leave it. It's good to have some to go back on.
I actually echo Counselor Capitanic, I think that there should be no end date and they should be able to be reviewed as needed, as far back as needed. Uh, future councils are gonna get wisdom for conversations that we had. And having that accessible would be more than a benefit.
Remembering, of course, that the official record of council meetings is the minutes regardless of what you hear or see in the video. Okay, it looks like that's the extent of the discussion, so the, um, the general feeling is no time limit and, uh. On the question of the adoption of the motion. To request admin revise policy eighty one hundred audio recording and live streaming of council meetings. Counselor Anderson.
Um. Administration also made a recommendation to remove audio recording and replace with video.
That, that's a time-saving, I've known for a long time that it takes some, the conversion is in excess. Is an incredible waste of time. And, and I think they'll, so they're gonna revise the policy and come back with a revised policy to. Council is, um. Is there any objections in terms of just the verbal direction for them to having it come straight back to council, this is pretty straightforward. So on the question of the adoption, the motion to direct administration to revise policy eighty one hundred audio recording and live streaming of council meetings, all those in favor? Opposed, the count is eight and one and the motion is adopted. Seven point three, Counselor Wallack.
Um, I'd like to table this to after we, um, receive our report from our, uh, strategic planning session. Um, the reason for this is we've, this is on our list potentially for, um, agreements for our county. And I want to make sure that this is on our top five.
Okay, so there is a motion to table item seven point three till after. Sorry, until after. After you receive the strategic planning report. Tabling motions are motions without discussion on the question of the adoption of the motion to table list till after council receives a strategic planning report, all those in favor. Opposed, the count is seven and two and the mo, the item is tabled, the motion is adopted. Item number seven point four is, uh, one of those items that is open for some discussion. And it seems, uh, given the. Given the request from the Waste Commission, prudent for us to have a conversation before we. Pass a motion, so unless there's any objection, I won't ask for a motion, we'll open the floor up to your thoughts and feelings on this issue. Seeing no objection, Counselor Mins, I was hoping you would, uh, as one of the reps to the Waste Commission be willing to speak first. I, and, and I'll lead that in by saying. The Commission has had a lot of time talking about what are the levels of service that get provided at transfer sites? And making sure the sites do what they were intended to do and, uh. And still manage the, uh, the cost, as you'll see in the admin report, the county. Carry sixty percent of the weight on this organization and. Customs.
Thank you. Yeah, virtually, uh, uh. Exactly that, we're looking at. Uh, the Commission's looking at trying to, trying to cut the costs of, of transportation, of hauling the waste around. And, uh. You know, look at the burnables and, and, and some of these transfer stations where it's, where it's costing us way more money because. Tried to look after it, after, uh, we burned this stuff and. The trees and the stumps and everything and, and, and that, we're just trying to. Trying, trying to save money for, for everybody, so, uh. At no time are we looking to close the transfer station, we're looking at trying to. You know, cost saves, that's, that's what we're looking at, so. I guess if there's, with, with. The information that we've been given, not if. There's any discussion you, you want.
And, and there was some that, that I think you will remember better than me, but there was some discussion around, uh, for council's benefit, I'll share. Some exceptions in some locations, like.
Yeah.
On certain items in, in a location like the Water River Transfer Site because of the distance into the Boyle or the, the Athabasca main collection points.
Yeah, uh, Water and River and Grassland. Grassland.
Certain things, yeah.
Yeah, they, they, they looked at that because it's over that fifty kilometer. Uh. Distance, right, so. They would probably still leave a bin out there for the, the appliances and stuff like that.
Certain things at certain times.
Because they don't get a lot of burnables there, right, their, their, uh, farming community doesn't haul. Sticks. And leaves and stuff into, into the transfer, transfer sites there, but the, the beds and, and, uh. Or like mattresses and, 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 and you're. Uh, freon stuff, your appliances and that, they, they do come in there, so. So that's under consideration, but when you're so close to, to a main area, when you get in closer to Athabasca, it's, it's, uh. It, in the long run, it just makes sense.
And there's some other environmental issues too with.
Right.
The freon where you've got thieves going in to steal the copper off of.
For that actually, yeah.
Appliances, then you have this leak which is, you know. So far has not exceeded the reportable thresholds, but it's, it's a problem.
That actually happened a couple of weeks ago again, in, in the transfer station where. These came in and they wanted the copper out of, out of, trying to get copper out of, uh, these freon bridges. Stuff like that and, and they just removed it, so then. The Commission could be held accountable for that, right, so. So that's what we're trying to do, is just trying to. Just trying to make it better for, for, and, uh, save costs to, to everybody, so.
Counselor, when you had your, some thoughts you wanted to share?
Well, thanks, I, with regards to the burning, uh, aspect, I actually had, uh, during the early spring when we were going through the, um. The concern of fire, wildfire, um. There were residents who contacted and asked, where can we take, we've done our fire smarting, we've gone through our yards and our acreages and. Where can we take these great amounts of, um, sticks and branches and leaves, just, just those types of things, um, because we can't burn them here. And so, you know, we were able to give them, uh, a location, but my concern would be to. Um, take that away from some of these other transfer stations, um. Especially if, again with, with appliances and whatnot, I understand the concern, but I also understand that. If, if it becomes more difficult for people, people tend to dump. And, um, we're seeing it in some other locations where, you know, mattresses and, um. Stoves and ovens and these types of appliances, they are already getting dumped, so I would hate. I don't like lowering a service in, in a situation that, um, could create a, uh. Potentially a bigger issue, so of course you are on the commission, so we might have more information on that, but. For me, lessening a service or taking away some of those services, I'm not in favor at this time.
I think some of it is a mission creep. They started off with one thing and it's, it's grown, but Counselor Chamsik, your thoughts?
I agree, I worry about, uh, the lessening of services and those dumping around our county areas.
I don't know where we would be lessening the services. Like. For county, actually for county residents, I don't. Cause you're gonna, you're gonna have. You know, honestly, let's, let's call a spade a spade, you're gonna. How many, how many fridges does a person go through in a year? Like, like, let's call a spade a spade here, you know, how many mattresses do you go through in a year? It's, it's if you got your mattress or your fridge or your appliance on. On, uh, your vehicle already. Chances are you're gonna take it to the, to the transfer station that's selected, right, you know, you don't just. Plus, we have, we have, uh, through the Commission, we have our, uh, appliance and, and, uh. Fire Smart Roundup every year and stuff like that, a lot of people wait for that, you know, so they can take it into. So they don't get charged and stuff like that, so it's, it's like. And honestly, uh, let's say in, uh, proximity of Athabasca. You have, the town has a site for, uh, for trees and, and. Sticks and whatever, branches and whatever you want, uh. Over at Boyle, we have that site there, um, Athabasca Regional, out in, out in, uh. Lawrence Lake, we have that site there. It's, I don't think we're gonna lessen services. Uh, especially when we start talking about, uh, Water and River and, and, and Grasslands staying the same where, cause they don't. There's not a lot of appliances that go into them, them, uh. Uh, transfer sites, so. So I don't really think we're gonna lessen the services and you're never gonna stop people from. Driving down the road and dumping it, you're not, there's, there's, if, if, if. That's the way people feel that they need to do, they're, they're, they're gonna do it.
And I, and I think, um. Collateral to what you're saying, there was some feeling that. Once you've got a dump trailer loaded with sticks and stumps, that's not residential garbage, no, and it's, it's already on rubber and it's moving. So it's not, like, to move it an extra fifteen minutes is not an unreasonable type of request.
Yeah.
And, um, and really. You can't put a mattress at the curb. In the hamlet, or, or, in any hamlet, or in the village or the town. Do you, and when you're bringing the fridge out, often the people delivering it will also take away. Your old one unless you're delivering it yourself. Counselor Chamsik, you still have the floor, then Counselor.
I just wanted to correct my statement by using the term lessen unit of services, that's not what I really truly intended. Um, you know what, I can say that in, uh. The grassland area, you're absolutely right, you know, the roundup, uh. Days and stuff like that is something that's really valued by residents and, you know, and I, uh. Love that it's pretty well advertised as well in our communities, so great job on the Commission there. And, you know, for the consideration of the proximity of some of these major considerations and, you know. It's something that I personally value and these commissions look at that, so thank you for the good work.
Counselor Cromwell, floor is yours.
Thank you, and I'm just. Echoing that is my, well, but from certain, we are too far out, that if we do remove some of that service, the issue that it will cause. I know that the forty yard bin is frequently used up in the Water River area and. And constantly of use, and I would be afraid that. A lot of that wouldn't make the two hour round trip. You know, to the regional facility if people had to transfer that, so keeping that service the same like you're talking about is, is good, but I understand the logic behind it. And I think if we can cut a little bit of cost and still keep the essential, uh, going, that would be a benefit.
And, and there was, like, that, the northeast, there's some exceptions there because of your distance. Counselor Gerlach or Capitanic comments with your mic, please?
Partially unrelated, I've had a number of concerns and complaints from people wondering why the take it or leave it is closed in the. We, we, well, Perryville, Perryville's the one that I.
Collington.
Complaints about, because they said if it's recycling. Um. You know, they said, well, people are breaking in to take stuff, why would you break in to take stuff that you can go there and help yourself to?
Um, I think Counselor Mins with your mic today.
Yeah, the, the, the taken, it, it is, it's exactly that of, of why some of these. Spots have been closed off like that just due to the fact that people coming in after and, and, and grabbing. You, you can have it, take it and leave it, shed out there, but then they, they come in after and they grab. Other stuff and, and, and it's just another attractive, right? So if, if. If, uh. A lot, you know. I guess I, I, I don't know, it's, 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 to me, it's only. It's only, uh. Reasonable that, that if, you're gonna throw it in and take it and leave it shed, you, you would either bring it into town or, or. Save it and have a garage sale, I don't know, give it to the, give it to Collington or give it to the, uh. Egg society for, for a garage sale or something, because all it does is attract, that's what it does, is it attracts people to come in there. And they're looking for, they're not looking for the take it and leave it stuff, they're more looking for batteries and. Stuff that they can sell and, and, uh, copper and, and, and all that, eh, so.
I just want to clarify a statement Counselor Gerlach make, if my kids are listening, he spoke incorrectly about the name, it's actually just called the Leave It. Uh, Counselor Capitanic, floor is yours.
I guess just a follow-up question, um, I'm not sure if this is the right place to ask, but I'm curious why some. Transfer sites get to have a take it or leave it and some don't. Doesn't seem consistent to me.
I don't know the answer to that, but I mean, that, that could be a question that, um. I think it would be a reasonable question that we could ask, just. Could you provide us some feedback on why some have a take it or leave it?
I, I also get asked, so I have something to answer with other than this, I don't.
Some, some of it actually stopped during COVID, like, like that I do know, when that was at its height, they, those were shut off entirely. Um. Why they didn't restart, I, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, and I, I don't know what COVID would have to do with take it or leave it, I.
Be looking at it.
I, 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 I wasn't around when the rule changed on that.
I just need to say that I've had more complaints about that than anything else.
I think some of it, though, when you go in there, it's, people have garbage that they just don't have the spine to throw away. But it's still garbage and they wanna leave it, like, some of the stuff is recyclable, I know we've taken stuff, but sometimes in there, it's. It should have been more properly in a bin with a lid. Who, Counselor?
I, I just have to add, I went to a garage sale on a Sunday. And I wanted to buy these things that my wife wouldn't allow me to buy. But I was able to pick them up the next time they dump open because I got it, can take it or leave it, for now.
For a better price.
Yes.
We should maybe call it the ongoing garage sale. Counselor Wallack or Anderson? Comments? Counselor Anderson?
Um. I understand the reasoning behind these proposed changes and. I think that the Police Commission has looked at. The scenarios quite thoroughly and I appreciate that, I appreciate that considering. The user experience and, um, the reality of the situation. I guess they're looking for feedback. My feedback would be. If these changes are made, I just hope that there's a great communications plan to roll out with it so that people understand why they're being made. And what the impacts truly would be, like, I think you've justified that quite well here and. I'd like, you know, just to see a communication strategy around it so that. People are aware of the changes and why they're being made. Would you like a motion to provide feedback?
Yes, next, well, Counselor Wallack, did you, Counselor Holland, it is open discussion.
Yeah, just, um, in, in addition to, to that, I guess more than anything is, is if there are, when, if changes are implemented. And we were receiving a, a ton of complaints, is that going to be taken into consideration that maybe the, you know, we need to reverse? Uh, a decision, just wondering if that's something that's, um, also going to be discussed as well. That if changes are implemented and if the public come back and say this is not appropriate, I don't like it, that, uh, it be reconsidered. There's, you know, that conversation I'm wondering if will be taking place.
I would, I would. Probably say yes, like, like we'll be looking at, at, at all these, all these changes and that, and, and it will be, uh. Uh, discussed with the Commission, it'll be discussed, the, the communication with the public will be put out there. We, we've actually started having communications with the public at. I'll pick on one, out in my, my area, uh, West Spring Hills. Where the, the. That's where the dump trailers really started up to, to stop all the. All the, uh, trees and stumps and everything from coming in there just due to the fact that, uh. You know, probably every once a month or every couple of weeks, they had to bring a bobcat in to push it up because there's so much coming in there and, uh. And the pile was so huge and, and we'd have to end up hauling the ashes after anyway, that. The transfer site attendant. Made sure that you were, you were told that, or he made sure that he told everybody, even to the point where take a picture of the sign. Cause they've tried to stop this from happening before and no one ever adhered to it, so now they are really pushing it that, that, you know, you are not allowed to dump. Get in with that trailer anymore and, uh. It's. I would imagine there's been a bit of a pushback on it, but, but it, it is understandable, once, once people actually sit back and think about it. It is understandable why we don't allow dump trailers in there anymore, so.
And, and it's, and it's not even as much a, a change as an enforcing of the rules that have been revised.
Yeah.
If that's, I mean, I know the result is kind of similar, but I think the semantics matter.
Yeah, but there's a, we're always open for discussion.
So would it be reasonable then to have a motion that really directs the. The council provides some support for utilization of the transfer sites as originally intended? As a place for daily and weekly waste and recyclables? Let's let it come from not a commission member, maybe. Okay, so Counselor Anderson has moved that Athabasca County, uh. Direct administration to respond to the Athabasca Regional Waste Commission. With their support for the utilization of the transfer sites as originally intended. As a place for daily and weekly waste and recyclables. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if you're Counselor Gerlach. Or you just got into wire there.
Yeah, how do you dispose of mattresses?
Um, you would bring them to, today, like. The plan would be to bring them to Boyle or Athabasca and they get, um, shredded. Or there's another option to haul them in an enclosed trailer when the volume reaches a certain height. Um. But it's, it's, they're, they're problematic because they take up a huge amount of space and there's no way. But Counselor Mins, maybe you can.
Yeah, they come into, uh, you bring them into, into one of these sites and then, and then, uh, the Commission. Rents a shredder and they get shredded up and, and, uh, that way the volume. Of, of the mattresses and everything like that into the bin is, is way more, uh. More heavier and, and stuff like that, so, and then it's used for cover. Yep, used for covering at the, at the region. Yeah.
Because I know you're not supposed to burn it.
Yeah, they don't burn, they, they, they eventually end up in the line, well, though they do burn, so. The Commission doesn't burn. Uh, C A O Beck, I haven't asked your.
Um, Mr. Chairman, uh. We have nothing to offer you with respect to your support or non-support for the proposed changes, one thing that Counselor, uh, Deputy Reeve Anderson. Mentioned was maybe a communication strategy and we noted that in our R F D was maybe some engagement would make some sense. And it's just from purely selfish reasons. Generally, when their service levels at one of the commissions, when people are mad, they call the county office. They don't call the commissions and so we don't need those phone calls. It would be great if they understood, if you're not happy with the changes. Call someone else, but not the county office, this is not us, and so that's why we're recommending a communication strategy of some sort. If they're unhappy, phone this number. Not our number.
So you, someone might want to amend the motion to add, uh. Weekly waste and recyclables with a, um, additional engagement and communication strategy. Counselor, uh, Cromwell has added that amendment. Ms. Blair, I didn't really worry that carefully, but. So Counselor Cromwell, come on, the first one was great. The amendment is, um. To say, uh, to add the words with, with some additional and public engagement and a, and a thorough communication strategy. Or add a communication strategy. Counselor Cromwell has moved amendment to add the words, some additional public engagement and a communication strategy. On the question of the adoption of the amendment, all those in favor? Opposed, count is nine and zero, the amendment's adopted, any more discussion necessary on the main motion? Counselor Holland?
Sorry, I'm, I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around it all, so the public engagement, will that take place prior to any changes or this is after the changes?
Well, it's up to the Commission.
After the Commission, I would hope it's before.
Uh, so there is a motion on the floor to direct the administration to respond to the Athabasca Regional Waste Commission. With council's support for the utilization of the transfer sites as originally intended as a place for daily and weekly waste and recyclables. Uh, along with some additional public engagement and a communication strategy. On the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor? Opposed, count is eight and one and the motion is adopted. We are, uh, moving along, I am eight point two, just calendars, that's, uh. That's uh. Does anybody need a break or can we handle this first? I have uh, re- received a request that I want to share with you that will impact the calendars. So it would be, this is from um, Jennifer Pasco, who is titled Vice President of University Relations from Athabasca Universities. We know that convocation is coming up on the nineteenth and twentieth of this month. Sorry, of June. Um, and uh, as Pascal writes, I'd be grateful if you would consider asking county councillors for their support. Through their presence, June nineteenth and twentieth, we are already receiving amazing volunteer support through the service organizations for the. Uh, selected volunteer shifts. So this would be more in support of greetings on behalf of the town and county in the morning as guests. Arriving at the multiplex, which begins around ten. So ideally we would arrive around nine thirty. Then you're free to go near eleven or watch the ceremony in the multiplex as schedules permit. There's a second option for more formal volunteer roles as social hosts for the convocation festival that's on campus after the ceremony. For grads and guests will be have uh, sorry grads and guests will be relaxing and having fun. For this portion, we'd provide an orientation and a tour for volunteers at noon and volunteers would be stationed or solo in pairs across campus and until around four P M. So it's a chance to. For the grads of A U who've often never been on. Campus or in the region to tour and learn a little bit about what's going on and they are looking for some volunteers there if you're willing. Um, I think I'll send an email out to so that we can respond because we do need to call call. Coordinate how many are coming so they know, yes, there's some people that are interested and or no, there's not. Um, one of those days I'll be. Providing greetings on behalf of the region. Uh, one day I'll do it, one day Maribele will do it and uh. So so I'll be around for them. Other items uh, in June. On the fourteenth, there's the North Alberta Elected Leaders Meeting, that's in Fox Creek. The Greater North Meeting from the twenty fourth has been rescheduled to the twenty eighth. I think there's an Alberta Hub meeting on the twenty sixth. Is that right of June? And there's a North Alberta Alliance for Growth and Opportunity Meeting at eight P M. In St. Paul on the twenty sixth. And on the sixth of July, we have the fly-in barbecue and that's all I have written down online. Starting with Counselor Cromwell, work away around the table.
Thank you. I have nothing to add, but I will make the request. Uh, I'll speak to the chair to move the M P C meeting from the twenty fifth. To the morning of the twenty seventh, much like we did for today.
Um, that's a question more for admin if that's appropriate and we have time. What the split the M P C schedule would look like.
Yeah, I'd have to uh, check with you and get back. It's a great idea. Uh, saves everyone time and. And money. Um. Let's maybe get back to you and report. On the eleventh, there's still time to change.
Okay, so are you prepared to? And postpone that idea to the eleventh?
Absolutely, but this is giving admin time to prepare.
Just thought that maybe we should also look for July for the twenty third to the twenty fifth. As well.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a heads up. We don't need a a date at this time, but we've got a whole bunch of uh. Uh, H R things. We really want to run past council to get them moving finally, if you know what I'm. Being employee. Um. Issues and they've been backlog forever. If it seems like. The eleventh is not a huge agenda. Uh, or even if it is, we would ask council. Could we set aside the afternoon for closed session just for the one item and nothing else? Um, and if it seems like it's not because of circumstance and the eleventh gets full. We might ask council for a special meeting just to deal with H R. Um, just so we can get this moving and get it off our plate and get the employees in in the place where they need to be.
So we'll we'll know what the agenda looks like by the sixth of June. And I could say. We could provide advance notice of of the potential for a special meeting if it were to happen on the thirteenth.
Correct. If if it seems like things are too busy uh, and we need a special date, we'll work with the Reeve and then we'll work with council to find that date.
But if you're like. Looking at your calendars, I'll. My inclination would be to call it for the thirteenth. So don't. Of June. One, three, thirteen. But. Given how efficiently the meetings have been going, I'm hopeful. The eleventh will be a good day. Uh, okay, Counselor Cromwell, you're set. Counselor Gerlick, items.
I see everything. Seems to be included here.
Counselor Capitonic. Let's go. Nothing, Counselor Anderson.
The Athabasca Regional Multiplex Society Meeting on June seventeenth has been rescheduled for. July fifteenth at nine thirty A M. Also, I'm wondering, has the town of Athabasca scheduled a date for our next tri-council meeting? Because I believe it is their turn to host the next meeting and our last tri-council meeting was hosted by the village in January.
Traditionally of the towns hosted in the spring, like now.
Just wondering if there's been discussion around a date there or if.
Hmm. Um. Deputy Reeve Anderson, um. Uh, I did get, uh, we did get a letter from the town postponing. Let me just consult in the next few minutes as to what that letter said. I don't think they picked a future date.
Thank you.
Uh, Council.
Uh, June twenty fourth, uh, healthcare retention meeting. Hmm. I think that's it.
Healthcare retention on the twenty fourth. Counselor Chubbs.
Um, the Boyle meeting for library meeting for the eighteenth has now changed to the twenty fifth. And for July, I um, F C S S on the eighth. On the sixteenth would be Boyle Library and the eighteenth would be Town Library and that's all I'm aware of for right now.
Okay, F C on July uh, eighth is F C S S Boyle Library and the sixteenth Town Library on the eighteenth and you said Boyle Library on the twenty. Fifth of June.
Yes.
Counselor Holland.
Thank you, uh, just a note for the June first, uh, the Saturday, the Twatna uh, Watershed Group will also be working alongside um. The cleanup that's happening in Collington and Minook, uh, they'll be working along Twatna Creek there. Twatna River and pulling invasive species and replanting national uh.
This is a calendar or just a committee update?
It's it's should be on the counter, I'm hoping. But yeah.
So which, you want to add in? So do you just because I got lost there, you want to add another thing happening that same day or?
Yeah, yeah, just just it, I I know it's gonna be passed by the time this comes out, so it's just more than per information.
Can you just clarify for Leo which one you want added again?
The Twatna uh, work watershed working group.
The Twatna Watershed Working Group. Work B.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. Councilments.
Nope, everything was all there, running smooth. Do we have a waste commission tour? Oh, that's on the twenty fourth of of June.
So you want to. So that's not on the calendar, so there's a waste commission meeting. Okay, I thought that was moved. Um, yeah, the waste commission meeting was moved to from the seventeenth.
To the twenty fourth. Of June.
Yeah.
And that will have a road tour. Really, not a road tour, but a tour of the. Yeah, landfill tour.
Beauty. Tickets are selling fast.
Yeah, you won't believe.
Who has not moved to motion, Councilman's?
Oh, I'll move the motion, okay, except the calendars.
Counselor Capitonic. On the question of the adoption of the agendas as amended, Councilman's has moved. All those in favor. Opposed, the ca- the calendars are adopted as amended. We've uh, got time, I think, to go through the reports and then maybe take a break before the. The delegation. Those start ten point one G, Counselor Holland.
This is just a a quick update for the Athabasca Lightning Trail Trail Steering Committee. Uh, we're still waiting on a a date for the June meeting, however, the. M O U that we have been discussing has been circulating and being approved by council, so that's excellent. Uh, and then the two events, of course, that are coming up for the cleanup, uh, June first here and then June fifth. Um, are getting some uh, great uh, volunteer interest, so we're looking forward to. Uh, that so far we're sitting at fifteen volunteers for Saturday, so I think that's awesome.
The version that they're approving is that like the one that's contains the amendments that got talked about last time here?
Yes, that the, oh, by the way, yes, that has gone in for um, review by the committee, the working group. And it should be discussed today by the uh, people who uh, put that particular statement in and they will be getting back to us uh, with their. What their uh, meaning of it was intended.
Didn't didn't count it, didn't our council ask for some amendments as well?
No, just the one.
Okay.
Question, it was just one question from what I understood.
Good. Greater North Foundation is uh, me. The um. I've provided you the information previously that C A O sur- surgeon is retiring. And uh, so the the uh, foundation board had a meeting. Last uh, earlier this week on Sunday afternoon because all the board members were in the the region. And there was a brief uh, a luncheon before that to to celebrate uh, Shirley's thirty seven years. Um, I was hoping that uh, there would be no objections to a letter coming from our council. Providing congratulations on behalf of Athabasca County on her long service and her retirement. And I don't know if we need a motion or if you're okay with me just writing a letter. But um, she did receive letters from uh, the premier, the minister of Nixon and the two local M L As as well. It's. Yeah, it's a, it's a long, uh, long service that you don't see very often. You know, people are getting long service awards in many organizations at the three-year mark now because they can't give a moment five.
I would be willing to make that motion if it's required to uh.
Director letter of congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations from county council. And and a great job, it's a. It's an amazing organization, Greater North, so.
Counselor Minz has made a motion to uh, direct that a letter of congratulations be prepared and on behalf of Athabasca County and council. First, the retirement of C A O. Surgeon, is there any discussion? Seeing none on the question of the adoption of that motion, all those in favor. Opposed, it's unanimous at nine and zero. There are other updates out of that committee. There's uh, still work on the asset management plan. I know on some. Private conversations I've had with uh, folks at Lacklavish there. There uh. Had been one of kind of the. The uh, the Lacklavish, Lacklavish County had wanted a little bit more information before agreeing to. Increasing requisitions or touching requisitions to to address some of the long-term planning and uh, they've. There's good progress there and there, so I'm optimistic that once the. Once the uh, documents come back from associated, that you know, the foundation will be able to lay out a plan that. Addresses their. Addresses their questions and takes a long-term view and. Of the foundation's assets. Northern Lights Library System is Counselor Chamsik.
Um, we had our board meeting, A G M, um, executive changes have been made. I now sit on the grievance committee. Um, and from the historical um, that I know of it, that they've only met twice in at least seven years. We had a great keynote speaker, uh, Jim Harris, talking about the future of A I in municipalities and committees. Um. And in the board uh, session, boards chairs meeting, a session on succession planning that helps really put uh. A guide towards and form a. Direction for and a plan for Athabasca County to move forward, uh, Lacklavish County. Um, gave a great plan, you know, helping towards some of those strategies and provide. That inserts for municipalities aren't being, or sorry, library boards aren't being caught off guard. Um, it was, I was really happy to be able to attend. They did a great job and um, also I'd like to point out, uh, Northern Lights did a great job providing a well-informed meeting. And is also they ran with their library managers meeting consecutively with the board chair meeting in our. Um, give for some cost savings and um, our region and county was really well represented all around.
Thank you. Counselor Wallack, uh, Regional Healthcare Recruitment and Retention Committee.
Yeah, just wanted to remind everybody that there is the healthcare barbecue tomorrow at the riverfront for all the community and the healthcare workers. So um, thanks to uh, Save On Foods, Extra Foods or Independent Foods and uh, the Rotary Club for doing some donations for that. And uh, it was World Hot, World Doctor Day last week, so uh, little gift baskets were given to all the the doctors in the community, so.
Thank you. It would be in order to uh, receive a motion to accept the reports of committees for information. Counselor Chamsik. Has moved. Is there any further discussion on those reports? Counselor Holland.
Just a quick question, um, for the retention committee, will there be a profile being done for Athabasca County as well as the town envoy? Or what? For the uh, R H P A P was looking for. Uh, a community profile.
Yeah, so that it's done with the town. It's all in one.
Oh, so Athabasca County has included in with the town? No, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so there's a motion on the floor to accept the reports for information. All those in favor. Opposed, the motion is adopted, nine and zero. It's uh. We're fifteen minutes away from uh, our delegation. Let's uh. Just Linda coming in or is she, is she here or is she uh? So uh, let's, why don't we take a ten-minute break and come back at five minutes to to eleven? It is uh five minutes to eleven and I'd like to reconvene the May thirtieth Athabasca County Council Meeting. With us this morning for our delegation is uh Glenda Farnin from Stars and she is here to speak about helipads and heliports. And uh Glenda, I know uh we've we've met collectively a number of times, most recently, I think, at the opening of the Fuel Cache at the airport last summer. Which uh my impression was well received in the community, but. Couple new faces at the table, so we'll start again with introductions. I think you do know our C O, Mr. Bob Beck. We have Recording Secretary Ms. Blair, Communications Coordinator, Mr. Schenkelberg, and Counselor Minz.
Well, Minz, uh Division Eight, Babtis Lake Island, Lake Erie.
Good morning and welcome. Thank you for coming again today. Uh Tracy Hall in Division Five, which is east of Athabasca.
Kelly Chamsik, Division Seven, Grassland at Moore and Crosby Day areas.
Morning, Camille Walk, Division Nine, North of the River.
Good morning, Ashton Anderson. I reside in Division Three, Open Boyle area.
Good morning, Natasha Captain, Division Two, Collington, Manuka, New Pine Creek.
Good morning, Joel Nirock, office area.
And good morning, Walton Gary Cromwell, far north, up including Wanderin River and area. Thank you for being here.
Appreciate you making the trip to talk to us. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you so much. Well, I've had the pleasure of working with your council for many years now, so really appreciate. The partnership that we have shared for all these years as well. Um, I look forward to bringing you your annual update in July, but today we're going to specifically talk about heliports. So first and foremost, I want to um. Impress upon you that certified heliports across entire province are a generational investment in your community. We are uh lacking heliports in the northern region compared to central and southern Alberta. Even, you know, communities that are much smaller than than Athabasca as well. So it's really an important factor. As we work together to ensure that northern residents have access to critical care. Um, is there somewhere I'm? Oh, thank you. So first and foremost, let's look at um some statistical information for Athabasca County. So including specifically for Athabasca Hospital as well as your local scene calls and search and rescue calls. So within Athabasca County as of April thirtieth of this year, so this is a five year solid overview plus. Whatever's happened so far this year, one call so far. Up to April thirtieth. So Athabasca County overall. Within your boundaries would average twenty two to twenty three missions per year, so twice a month at least. Fifty seven percent are I F Ts or inter facility transfers, forty three percent are scene calls. So you are over and above on your inter facility transfers, which would include your rural areas where there's been occurrences. And that patient's been delivered by ground ambulance to the nearest local hospital. But because it is of a critical nature, then Stars is called to intervene and bring critical care. So when we talk about Athabasca Hospital specifically, there they average about eight I F T missions per year. And then an additional approximately three scene calls per year on average for Athabasca itself. But it's also important to recognize what's happening throughout your municipal areas with your bordering neighbors. So you can see when we're looking at the same timeframe, this five year overview up to April thirtieth of this year. Now there's been throughout your neighborhood, which is also areas that your residents travel. Or your neighboring municipalities, their residents are traveling through Athabasca. Now in this exact same timeframe, um back to two thousand and ten. Fifteen over fifteen hundred missions. But you can see the volume that Athabasca certainly does get a lot more traffic throughout your area. You are at the top of the the list as far as calls that have been um. Where Stars has been called along with your bordering neighbors. So this is a really important factor on the importance of a helipad. In Athabasca to not only serve your residents in your area, but also all the neighboring residents. And those that are coming through Athabasca. Or scene call occurrences for your residents that may happen in another municipality. Certified helipads are a designated rendezvous point. There's many different factors involved here as well. It can involve cost savings because you're able to alleviate call out charges. For additional resources that may be needed, like ground ambulance, fire and rescue or R C M P. It also helps to increase those resources availability for other calls. Because now we have a designated site for Stars to come in and bring critical care. And we do not require the assistance of these other resources when you have a helipad. So it's kind of a, you know, a full circle component. Now lots of people always ask, what's the difference between helipad versus a heliport? So a helipad is any area that is designated as a safe landing area. But a heliport is an actual facility designed for multiple takeoff and landings. It's usually a larger complex and can oftentimes even offer customized range of services like. Fire suppression or fuel consumption, you know, availability, these types of things. Not necessary, but they are additional resources that can be available. So there are significant critical advantages to a certified helipad. First and foremost, it is a designated rendezvous point. We can also decrease transport time, especially important in time critical life threatening situations or diagnosis. Such as heart attack, stroke, trauma, or patient that may be bleeding out. So these are all really time critical sensitive situations. We can eliminate the reliance of us having to rely on ground ambulance resource availability. Currently, we have to land at your airport. And then we must wait for ground ambulance to come get our crew in order to actually get critical care to the patient at the hospital. Sometimes when we've had some experiences lately, especially with ground ambulance availability being um a real factor. In the fact that we're there and ready to come, but there's no ground ambulance to come and get our crew. In order to get them to the hospital, you know, bring the stretcher, all of these things in order to package the patient patient. So that's a really important factor in being able to alleviate. Multiple patient transfers as well as being able to get the crew to and from a designated area like airport. We also can decrease the time to arrival of critical care skills. Our crews are world renowned for their critical care skills. As well as the equipment that we will bring. A lot of the different rural hospitals don't have some of the really specific. Items that are needed in medical equipment like ventilator, ultrasound, the easy I O drill. You know, that's used in time sensitive cases when we must have immediate I V access. Universal blood on board. We bring universal blood now. We also have increased that from two units of blood to four units of blood now, because we've seen so many trauma cases where patients require more. Than just two units of blood. It also helps to eliminate depletion of a local hospital supplies. So that they are still ready for other patients that may need blood, because we're not depleting their supply by bringing blood with us. Advantages for critical patients. Well, it decreases the multiple patient movements. This is very, very important in the fact of. Reducing further risk or injury to the patient, especially if there is um airway um. Difficult airway management, so and I V access dislodgment. So especially like, you know, for an intubated patient, for example, this is really important to be able to decrease all the multiple patient movements. Also, the fact that it decreases having that patient exposed to elements which can create shock as well. You know, by being able to go right from the hospital to a nice warm helicopter and take off. Not being transferred to the hot to the airport and then transferred to the helicopter and all these additional. Transfers that really you want to eliminate. It helps to reduce further risk and increases patient safety. We decrease the time of arrival of the critical care skills. Once again, being able to have. The the crew members a land right directly at the hospital is a really important factor when there is airway situations. As well as again depleting the local supply of blood. And we have a brand new massive hemorrhage protocol. That's I'll be presenting more information at the next update. Time critical emergent cases. You must have that critical care expertise, being able to manage difficult airways. Difficult um I V access and stabilization prior to the transport. There are times when we will just come and assist and stabilize that patient and may not have end up transferring them. But it's still really important to bring the critical care skills to help your local um medical professionals. Oh, one too many. So let's talk about the Athabasca proposed H one heliport. Athabasca Athabasca is very um fortunate that you are able to be served by two different Star spaces. Edmonton and Grand Prairie. So Edmonton flight time is fifty minutes from Grand Prairie. Flight time is eighty five minutes. Uh, H one means that it's a multi engine helicopters only that can land at that type of helipad. You are this is because you are in a very, your hospital is located in a very built up area. You have housing and development all around in all directions. And there is no emergency fatal within or final approach and takeoff within the um Transport Canada limits. Another factor, um I know that previously there was a helipad uh review that was done many years ago, I think two thousand and seventeen or so. From Alberta Health Services regarding helipads. So they kind of had their own criteria. Which was number one, um you had to have ten or more on an average yearly. Uh I F Ts at your hospital, you're averaging eight. So then that. Does not qualify under their compliance of what they expect. Uh, you had to be more than forty five minutes away from tertiary care, which you are. But you also had to be more than ten minute drive time away from the nearest airport, which you're not. So you really had two, you only had one of the criteria that would be met for Alberta Health Services standards. Through this review as well, then they um had their own chosen kind of plan of what they'd like to see for a helipad. Which required lighting, it required heating and things like this, which is really not necessary in the big scheme of things. So this is why we had proposed to the town as well as the county previously. Um, to have a look at, because you have another option here. Where the original helipad was supposed to be designated was on Alberta Health Services land. But then when you don't meet all the criteria and they want all the bells and whistles for a helipad. Was an opportunity to know that on the opposite side of the hospital, still located with the hospital, but it's town land. So now you don't have to meet all the other criteria. You don't require lighting. That's a lot significant cost savings. You don't require lighting, that's a lot, significant cost savings. You don't, we don't require heating, like we have night vision goggle capabilities, so there's no reason for the lighting. The heating is an astronomical cost. We don't require that as well. If we have lots of, which I'll have further examples for you. Other communities that we've worked with, that the town comes in, you know, when they're doing the side streets and all the snow removal, then they just come in and do a quick little circle around on the helipad and keep it, you know, in check that it's free of snow and snow clearing as well. They just add that in, an extra five minutes or so to their regular staff that is servicing the area. So there are opportunities and ways to work together in order to make this become a reality, if that is what your community would choose to do. So I want to give you some examples here. So I worked with Valley View, this was back in 2015. Theirs is an H1 heliport, a P3 partnership. So it was a partnership, equal partnership between the town of Valley View, the MD of Greenview, and Sturgeon Lake First Nations. It was the very first project where they are equal partner in a community project. So it was really well-received, you know, like it is, it's an accomplishment above all accomplishments to have this helipad. And with that, they also worked with corporate partners, as well as gift and kind services. So Atco, for example, Atco Electric was part of this, where they donated their gift and kind of putting in the lighting and everything. So Valley View in particular, you can see where it's located. It's fenced, it's co-located right next to the hospital, but they chose to also have a lighted heliport walkway all the way down to the parking lot that we cross the parking lot to go into the hospital. So these are all different options that are available. They just, it was an opportunity working with Atco Electric as well, you know, with gift and kind services, so that's still another thing to keep in mind. This just gives you an example, partnering to save lives. Community partnerships, saving lives. This is the sign in front of their heliport. It's true example of community partnership and what can be achieved by working together. So they were very proud to have this opportunity as well. Then Alberta Health Services, in this particular one, they came onboard as a partner that they provided all of the initial, the site and design, that type of thing, you know, that they did include that. So then that way they were shown as a partner as well. So that's another opportunity to bring forward. So this particular helipad in Valley View, within about six months' time, it was built and paid for, like it was amazing, the partnership that came together. Didsbury, for example. Now, we had to land at the church parking lot that you see in the background there. And then can you imagine still having, you're that close, but still having to use ground ambulance, still having to have multiple patient transfers, all of these things, because they didn't have a helipad or heliport. And so their hospital, Health Foundation, ran this whole entire project and paid for it. So through them. So there's different opportunities, again. I've worked with many, many communities for helipads. It was my idea originally, when I met with the town, that we should approach your Rotary Club. Because most of the helipads throughout the province, there has been some Rotary involvement in order to bring it to fruition. Rotary never does, you know, support like operations, that type of thing, but they're always in there to support community and capital projects. So this is a great opportunity, which is why I suggested, since you have a Rotary Club here, that we would bring a presentation, which we did last October, I think it was, to your club here, to ask them if they might consider to partner and help, you know, with the town and the county, if you were to move forward with this project. This gives you an idea of town of Bezano, a very tiny little town down in southern Alberta, H3 heliport. So they had a heliport previously, but then after many years, they needed some upgrades. And it was when that review was done by Alberta Health Services, their heliport was shut down by Transport Canada. So then they went back to do the additional upgrades that were necessary and put in daylight striping poles that you see in the background, those types of things that were required, redo the fencing a bit. And you can see theirs is a mixture of gravel and grass. So I mean, it doesn't have to be paved, it doesn't have to be the Taj Mahal. Even H1 heliports can be like this. So there's lots of different options, depending on what your site and design would come forward as your best result and best for your community as far as maintenance and upkeep, those types of things. I just wanted to give you a lot of different examples. Innisfail, now this was just last year of June, that they had a grand reopening. Again, their heliport originally, from 1998, was completely built and paid for by their Rotary Club way back when. And then it ended up that they put in a whole, this is across the street from their hospital. They put in a whole recreational area, so aquatic center on one side, skateboard park on the other, housing all behind that you can see. And where the heliport is now, used to be tennis courts that were kind of dilapidated. So they, once their heliport was shut down, again, after the review, needed upgrades and these kind of things, and they turned it into tennis courts. They decided that they would put a heliport back in again. So they partnered, it was, the town of Innisfail was the leader of the project. Rotary Club was involved, as well as local 4-H Club. And they were able to have a grand reopen. You can see it's an absolutely beautiful heliport, right across the street from the hospital and in totally built-up area all around, but it can be done. So in closing, I would just like to say, I'm sorry that this got cut off a little bit. I didn't quite have that centered right. Saving precious time saves lives. And heliports are a big, big part of that in many different factors. And the fact that it is a community investment, it is a generational investment for our children, our grandchildren, and the generations yet to come. It's really something to think about. And I hope that you will see value, not only to your residents, but to the entire northern region. And join what most of the smaller towns in central and southern Alberta have. And it's a fact in the statistical statistics that are shown from our Stars responses. When there is a helipad in the, in the, co-located with the hospital, we will continue to serve your community even more and bring critical care, because it is a designated area for us to be able to bring that to your residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Glenda. I'm sure there's a few questions. And I, I think you've kind of answered my first question, which was prior years ago, when the helicopters still landed on the grass beside the hospital. I live kind of on what I assumed was their flight path, because the frequency of red helicopters that rolled by my house was much greater than it is now. And I think, I was at the Rotary presentation last fall. I think John mentioned that once the heliport is in place, the decision-making criteria improved, like, so that you could reasonably expect that eight interfacility transfers to shoot up well above the minimum threshold, once, once you've got access to that. Is that a fair statement?
Well, that is a fair statement, in the fact that, right now, we have to go by the chart of call. So that involves different increments of time that it takes from the time, you know, the patient actually is injured to the time we can get them into hospital environment, right? So you have to think of the time that it takes for the ground ambulance to get to the airport. And if there isn't one available, which has been the case more recently in many communities, then you've got to add that time factor in as well. The time it takes to transfer that patient, the time it takes to go back to the hospital, you know, then packaging the patient, all of these different multiple transfers, they are all included. So now one whole, you know, even though you're only five minutes away, it might be an hour and a half before the patient is completely packaged and actually going in the helicopter. So when you alleviate all these extra little bits and pieces, 15 minutes here, 20 minutes there, all these other factors, and the patient's safety factor, like, it's, it's a win-win to have a helipad, where our crews can just come, land, come in, package the patient, take out the patient, get them to tertiary care, do the critical care en route as well. There's none of those other factors involved. And the fact that your other resources, especially in the smaller communities, where resources are very limited, now they are always available for other emergency calls. So, you know, they all work in tandem together, but really you're saving lives any way you look at it, by having other resources available as well.
Are there other questions, Counselor, from Council? It's unusual that we have no questions. We can always count on you for some.
I very much appreciate your presentation, being that I am in the far northeast of the county and understanding the geography around there. My question, and I doubt we have the answer to that, and I'm not going to hold you to it.
Okay.
How many calls in a five-year average do you think Stars are unable to attend or is currently given to HERO due to flight time coming out of Fort McMurray? I know that HERO does quite a few calls up in the north. And looking at the counts on, on your presentation here, I'm just wondering if, if factored in, would it be more appropriate to look at a facility in Boyle versus Athabasca? Or if that would have any impact in a?
Boyle as well, you know, there was a helipad there, but it's right in the middle of the parking lot. There's a lot of things, which is why, you know, it was shut down as well, like there. But there is opportunity, we spoke with their mayor as well. There is an opportunity there that they are looking at, where we might relocate, or they might relocate it, still on town land again, so that they have that opportunity, because they don't meet the Alberta Health Services criteria, so they won't, you know, be able to have a paid helipad. But it doesn't mean that it cannot be a community project, once again. So they are looking to, to that. Certainly, our response has decreased, because now there's a lot of extra time in order, you know, so a lot are going by ground to other areas, because there's too many factors in the chart of call, right? When you have to add all those up. So our transport physicians, they are, since Stars is the dedicated critical care provider in Alberta, so it's our transport physicians out of the Emergency Link Center in Calgary that make all the decision-making, using the chart of call, as to what is the best response, what is going to add up to be the best time savings for that patient. They determine where is the, which hospital is going to be the receiving hospital, what, you know, that patient may require as far as, you know, on the other end, when they get to the receiving hospital, all these factors. We also dispatch HALO and HERO for both areas. So in instances where the time savings would benefit the patient to be able to get them to a hospital environment at the earliest point in time, then we would dispatch HERO. So there, I did have, I don't have it with me here, but I do have like a five-year or three-year overview of statistics that I can bring to you at the next other update, that shows you kind of what Star's response is in Alberta from all three bases, and then in comparison to HERO and HALO responses in the same timeframe, to give you an idea. But really important to understand, it is our transport physicians that dispatch them. So of course, we're always doing that in conjunction with what is best for the patient and where can we find those pockets of time savings when you have to add up all the different responses in order to get that patient to a hospital environment.
And, and I remember that we did speak about that, and we're talking about the standard flight area with your new version, and I remember we had a good chat about that. My other question for you then, what is the maintenance requirement for that facility? Let's say it's Christmas Day and we haven't had public works out for three days because of the holiday and there are two feet of snow on there. What is your, your daily maintenance requirement for snow removal, lawn care, et cetera? It would be required and to make sure that that is obtainable from our partners as well.
That's a good question, but it's, it's not what's required so much from us. Like, of course, yes, there needs to be snow clearing at all times. So as, all I can do is speak to, because I, the requirements come from Transport Canada with your heliport manual and all of these factors, right? So that's kind of all entailed in that as far as requirements. From our aspect, though, what we've done is we've just worked with other towns in, as I said, just to have their public works to come out. So it is requirement. If it's Christmas Day and nobody's working, well, it is a requirement. Something would have to be done if there is two feet of snow, or we will not be using the heliport, right? Which really does, is, it's just something that needs to be worked into, whether it's the county or the town's, uh, plan, normal plan for snow clearing and those types of things. You know, if there's just a little skip of snow, it's going to blow away anyway when we're going to land. So it just depends on, you know, how much snow, but it doesn't matter. Like, we work 24/7, and there will be a requirement there as well, that the helipad is able to accommodate us 24/7. So, but again, the more particulars specifications are probably included in your whole manual as to how that works. But Valley View, again, for an example, there's a partnership kind of between the county or the MD of Greenview and the town. So the town absorbed most of the snow clearing. They have a staff member, I think, that actually comes in to turn the lights on, because Alberta Health Services did not want to have an added person, you know, that needed to be doing that kind of thing. So I think the town absorbed most of those roles and just, just put them into a different, not adding an extra person, but actually just expanded a certain person's role, you know, on staff. Different than when we had the QE2 hospital helipad initially, at the old hospital. They had security cards, because they're there 24/7. So they were the ones that would go down and turn the lights on and those kind of things as soon as we were, had alerted them that, you know, it was incoming patient. So there's lots of different factors, depending on, you know, who is willing to help.
Counselor Holland?
Thank you, thank you very much. It's a lot of information to digest, and I appreciate all of what you have brought forward to us and for us to consider and look at and really dive into. I guess my question is another example of a heli, I don't know if it's helipad or heliport, but in Westlock. And I understand that AHs funded that particular helipad, heliport. Is it because they met the criteria, AHs criteria is the only reason why AHs would be involved in funding?
They originally had a site committee developed back in 2017, when all of this, and that review was done of all the heliports in Alberta. So, and we do have, our Flight Operations Director sits on that committee. So we do have a voice on that committee as well, but now they're restructuring. So now they're completely restructuring who's on that committee. So I'm not sure where it's going to land when we move forward, but currently we do still have a voice on that committee. Through that committee, then, they had a lump sum of money that they were looking at different places that either needed upgrades or needed brand-new helipad, right? And it was their determination based on that original criteria of those three things. So Westlock, for example, would have probably met all of that criteria, which would have led to them. And most recent example would be Town of Black Diamond, which is now Diamond Valley. So they, their helipad is like a $2 million. So they, their helipad is like a two million dollar helipad, was paid for by Alberta Health Services, right? So they, they met certain criteria and they had the overarching IFTs or interfacility transfers, all of these things, right? So it, it's, it was up to Alberta Health Services to choose which communities that they felt needed the most in the pocket of money that they had in order to accommodate certain communities. So some of the communities that needed, maybe just needed some upgrades, you know, not, not a full helipad, but just needed some upgrades, they just decided on their own that they would do it through their community. So example would be like in Pincher Creek, for example, you know, they just had a few things that needed to be done, so they did it as a community. And so their helipad was done and, you know, was really a very minimal time that it, we were not able to land there. Daysland is going through, they're just finishing their upgrades as well. So they, it was a community initiative along with the county in order to get that one going again. So there's lots of others that way. So other examples would be like Fort McLeod, that their helipad was completely shut down and has to be a completely new one. And so I'm not sure where that's going to go, you know, because theirs is located on Alberta Health Services land, which now the criteria comes in and they can't afford a two million dollar helipad, right? With all the bells and whistles. So you, you have a unique opportunity here that you have town land like Innisfail. You have town land where you don't have to meet all those criteria. It's really an important advancement for the North.
Okay, just a follow-up if I may please. Um, so just going back to that, you know, to have the opportunity like you've mentioned here in, in Athabasca, would that then limit the type of helicopter that could land there? So for example, as I understand, Westlock is only strictly for STARS. Any other transfer for a helicopter that's not STARS has to be done through the airport in Westlock. So is that something that would be similar here, that it would only be STARS and STARS only? Or could another?
Okay, good question, good question. That's the determination and the difference between H one, H two, H three. H one helipads have to be multi-engine, so it's not technically only STARS. Like military could come, but it has to be multi-engine helicopters. So little tiny, single-engine helicopters cannot land there. They would have to go to the airport. So that's a difference. But I want to impress upon you, it's not only STARS that can land. It's a multi-engine helicopter at a H one. H one helipad though is also because you're in the center of a very built-up area. All around has to go over buildings, houses, infrastructure, which is why it's an H one requirement. Where Bazano has three sides are all farmland. There's only one side, right? So you can have multiple flight paths in, which determines that that was an H three helipad. So then mu- single-engine helicopters could land at that one. Because there's plenty of room for crash landing and things when we talk about the FATO, where the final approach and takeoff areas. There's Transport Canada guidelines on how much room you have to have, which determines whether or not you're going to be in H one, H two, or H three.
Got it. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's really good information.
Counselor Gerlick has a question.
On the one in Innisfail, do you kind of have a ballpark to figure what that costs?
That one, and that would be the most recent one, right? So it was somewhere between seven hundred and fifty and eight hundred thousand dollars for that particular one. But again, it determines a lot of fact, you know, the, the main first point, and I don't know where that's at. I haven't had a chance to talk with Mayor Belay. Is whether or not the site and design was done. Because site and design gives you more factors on what is required, gives you the opportunity on how many flight paths do you have coming in, you know, which is going to be opposed to where it previously was going to be located right next to the Canadian Tire that can no longer be located there without Alberta Health Services permission, right? Because that, that's their land. So depending on how many flight paths you may have, but don't think it's a deterrent if you only have one flight, flight path in and out. That's exactly how it was for the QE two hospital, which is a receiving hospital at the time. They only had one flight path in and out, because you know, that is right in the middle of Grand Prairie trains, houses, everything in all directions, right? So they had one flight path in and out, which is still fine. You just come inland, when you're ready to take off, you got to hover and then go back out the same way that you came in. So you have lots of great options here, you know, so.
I guess my eyes see the product, but my mind can't wrap, wrap any sense around the cost.
It's.
It just seems, it seems like an exorbitant amount of money for that sale.
Well, look at it this way. In two thousand seven, when I first proposed that, you know, STARS had just come in two thousand six in December. So we were just here to serve the northern region and we needed to have a helipad because we're going to the, the receiving hospital that has no helipad. So we're doing transfers from the airport in the busiest time of two thousand eight, nine, like of Grand Prairie. It was like a forty-five minute to an hour transfer to get from Grand Prairie Airport to the QE two hospital. Like there's no reason for STARS to even be here with that much timeframe, just in town in order to get the patient to a hospital setting. So reaching out to all of the entire region to, to make them understand, you know, the importance of that and how it was going to change. Today now, like that helipad is, or heliport is still there, even though that hospital's not operational. It is a key rendezvous point for emergencies. So any kind of disastered preparedness, we still have a heliport landing for any type of military to come in and be able to land at that location, right? Right within a community. So in disaster preparedness, that's another aspect to look at. Aside from just the healthcare component for your community and area. Also, so that particular helipad, at that time in two thousand seven, we had to raise eight hundred thousand dollars then. Now for something like that, it would be in the two to three million dollars or more. Because that's a raised bermed helipad, like it's, it, and it has no heating or any of that. Like that would be over and above, you know, so. Yes, cost is a, is a big factor. I understand that. Innisfail, they did a five-year plan on theirs. So and a- along with working with their Rotary Club and community. So they did a five-year plan in order to make sure that they, they could raise the funds that were needed. And maybe that's how you look at it here, is not that it has to be built and paid for all in a year. Like unlike Valley View that they had all the bells and, or all the pieces put together in their P three partnership. And it was built and paid for in six months. But maybe you go a five-year plan, you know, what, whatever the case may be. Think of up to today from two thousand seven, literally the thousands of lives that have been saved because we've been able to go there. You have to think of it as a generational investment.
Other questions? Counselor Mins, Chaps, or Wall?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for the presentation and everything and, and I totally agree. Everybody wants, everybody will want a helipad for sure at their hospitals and stuff like that. So, so that just reaffirms it on that end with, with your presentation. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, there's Capitonic or Anderson?
Glenda, I want to thank you for coming to talk to us. You know, there's obviously you brought up many considerations for rural health, including the length of time those transfers take ambulances out of service. I know that's been a discussion many of us have been a part of is the ambulance service in the region, when they're available, when they're not, how far away they're coming to get to us. And, and then just even how long it's out of service, once, once you move somebody in it, what the cleaning protocol is. And I know eliminating that reliance has some value. In, in rural Alberta, I think it's fair to say, we all know that we can't have the same specialized services available in our healthcare center that's available in the city. You know, and, and in the city, you can roll down the hallway and get the care you need. But, but here for me, I, I think our residents deserve similar care. And figuring out how we do that is important. And heliport has the ability to reduce that hallway for people that live, live here. So thank you for sharing this with council. We look forward to seeing you in July. And we will let you go.
Okay.
Thank you.
If you have any other questions, don't hesitate to call me.
Nine one one, no.
Okay, thank you so much for your time.
Also, we are at item. Weird item number twelve point one. Seven point five was not, that's on the consent agenda. We are at item twelve point one, it's in order to take a motion to enter closed session. Counselor Capitonic has moved, we enter closed session, all those in favor. Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. There was a motion, there's a motion to leave closed session by Counselor Gerlick. The count was seven and two, the motion is adopted. We are back after a brief recess. The motion, Counselor Holland, was prepared to move as the council direct administration to consider in the two thousand twenty-five budget, improvements to the Boyle Fish Pond Recreational Area amenities. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, if you're ready for the question, the question is on the adoption of the motion that council direct administration to consider in the two thousand twenty-five budget, improvements to the Boyle Fish Pond Recreational Area amenities, all those in favor. Opposed, the count is nine and zero and the motion is adopted. There is no further business and the meeting is adjourned.